Oh, thanks. Okay, so, um.
Yeah, there's people who likes.
Oh, wow. Better be careful. No, this one?
Yeah.
This is the one that, here's where that paragraph. Right, there. Okay, you guys ready to start?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. So, um, do I have any volunteers for a pledge?
I'll do the pledge.
Pledge, okay. How about a reverence?
I'll do that.
You're a good sport.
Since Nate beat me to it, I was gonna jump on that.
You're going for it.
Okay, so it looks like the first, uh, item, or actually it's number two, the conditional use permit for an oversized structure for Steve Want. Have you guys all read through that by chance?
Yeah.
You have any questions or?
It looked pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, it looked pretty. Um, so is the height, it looked like the height is, the walls are 20 feet? They can go up to 25 at the peak of the roof? Okay, all right. That's the only question I had. Yeah, it looks like he's done a nice job at providing landscaping and it looks like it's gonna add to his property and store some toys, it sounds like. Um, okay, the next one is Rob Miles. He may or may not show up. I know Mary had talked to him and kinda discussed what, uh, we did with H.L. Parker and that we're kinda putting things in a static mode until the general plan is amended. So if he does show up, he might, we'll just have to entertain him as, as, uh...
So Shauna mentioned that he had not called her back, but we know if he was informed about the intention we had to table.
Mary did talk to him.
Mary, yeah.
Well, I don't know if she talked to him, but she reached out to him.
She, she actually did, yeah. Amanda should've brought the sunglasses.
Actually contacted.
He's in the sweet spot right there, Jacob.
Sorry, yeah, it can be haloed.
All right. So yeah, Mary did contact him and, uh, he did have a concern if he didn't show up, if he would, um, be pushed way off indefinitely. So he might show up. Has anybody, have you guys read through his?
I did.
Okay.
I did.
Any comments?
Only that, I feel like we need to be consistent. I think if we did that with H.L. Parker, we need to be consistent with all of them until we...
Oh, it's, I'm okay. It is, but I'm okay, I'm good. Um, yeah.
I agree that the consistency is important, but the, the question of being pushed off and definitely, definitely a valid concern.
Sure, sure.
So every developer, like, they're gonna be wondering, is this gonna last six months? Is it gonna last a year? How long it can be before, before it's something?
My thoughts are, if we tabled it until November, until we've had a chance to kinda collect the information that we're doing, and then at that, but I think also, you know, we talked about tonight, when we had the version, we, uh...
Hold on, yeah.
Hold possibly, until we can get the plan finalized. And, and there's a provision in that, in the current general plan. I think Mary saw that, so that I think we're looking at rights.
Right, right.
So Mary contacted me. Did, did we get any of those ordinances, those numbers of the states saying we can do that and do the hold? We have that, so we can present that if we do?
I do have the number, uh, it's 10-9A-509.
Okay.
From the Utah code. And, uh, I did read it. Um, there's a little bit of interpretation too, but we have had some, some green light from our city attorney as well.
Sure.
So...
Did you say 10-9A-509 or 20M is the last?
It's 10-9A-509.
Um, and then in November, are we coming up with a hard date of when we're gonna get the plan basically done by? Is that what we're trying to get done in November? So we'll let everybody know this is how long it's gonna be open for?
What did you say last time? Was it the, the date of the commission meeting in November? Isn't that what we talked about? So we have time to meet in October with them and then by the time you came in November, we'd be able to make a decision. I thought that's what we had discussed, that was the ever said for sure.
Is that what we wanna do? Just put a hard, hard date on it or just?
I think so from, I, I think that would be a great idea. I don't know if we'll be able to. Um, just from the feedback I've received from the mayor, it could, it could be a year, up to a year and a half.
Okay.
Um, just because of the nature of everything that needs to be accomplished and getting the community's input, so, um, I, I think 18 months is probably tops. 12 months is a good goal.
And now, is that for, that's for if we...
Rezone.
If we, if we put this temporary land regulation in place to halt any new rezones. But as far as giving these particular developers an answer, then because I guess it depends on what the city council comes back with, right?
Right.
And so I think it's gonna, that's gonna be the determining factor. If they, if we send that motion tonight, that recommendation, and then the city council approves it, then I, I don't know if we send it to the city council with a date at this point.
Everything's, everything's recommendation, so I think we recommend what we truly feel we want.
Okay.
And then it falls in their hands.
And I feel, I mean, if we, if we recommend that, I feel we need to do it until the general plan has been reviewed and adapted and put in place. And then at that point, we can open it up again to further develop or further rezones, I guess I should say.
So it sounds like...
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing you guys.
Sorry. We don't wanna look at the sun, so...
I think if you used the microphone even though, even now, it would help me.
Okay.
So I guess Nate's concern is, is are we gonna be able to provide them with a hard, fast date?
And we don't have to. And we don't have to. Like I said, we'll do 12 to 18 months and we'll know more down the road.
Okay.
And, and if that's a recommendation, that's a recommendation.
I think that's to, just to shoot for that. But to let them know that that's not set in stone. But there's a lot of factors that play into that.
Sure. Okay. So it looks like we did five, um, before four. So four, so five is, is gonna be a recommendation to city council. Um, number four will not be a recommendation. It'll be a, a motion passed amongst the planning commission. And that's going to be, uh, the amendment to, uh, a comprehensive amendment to the general plan.
Now, do we need any other verbiage besides that?
Amanda, oh, Amanda's prepared something. What's your verbiage on that?
Okay, you have verbiage, then we'll let you do the moment.
Okay.
So I think she's, she's got, uh, more extensive verbiage in that. Um, but with that, you know, I just think it's important that as a planning commission, we're really at a crossroads in Hooper and more so than ever. Um, I had, I did have, get access to the general plan. I borrowed one from Cindy Cox. And, uh, there's been a lot of work done in the general plan by the, by the previous, um, council and commissioners, but yet a lot of it hasn't been put in place. And I think that's where we can probably, you know, start initiating that, you know, we hold the developers to a higher standard and, and, uh...
Would it remind me what committees we have in place right now and what?
Arts and Recreation, um, zoning.
Commercial and Transportation.
Um, Trails and Pathways, I think is another one.
Low-income housing was part of it, but since President Trump passed the law, got rid of Obama's regulations, we don't have to live in low-income housing as much as we did before.
Good.
Okay, so. But so, just everyone heads up, so Amanda will provide that motion, not a, well, that motion for item number four with, uh, appropriate verbiage. And at that time, that's, that's where we're expecting, you know, a lot of comments from the, from the community and, and to get their opinion. And I, um, as they state, I, I, I thought it'd be appropriate as well as they come up and, uh, state their name and address. I would like to add a question in there. Just let, let me know what you guys think of this. Is, I would like to hear why they moved to Hooper? What it, what attracted them to live in Hooper? I think that'd be an appropriate, uh, question to add to that as well. Um, and then at that point, they can give us their, their feelings on what their vision of Hooper should be and, and what it should look like in the future.
There was, uh, somewhere, I haven't had this in front of me, but where it states that we were supposed to be reviewing this plan annually and then every five years possibly adjusting it. Do you know where that's at in here if we wanna reference that at just?
I don't. I do remember reading that, um...
I know it's in here.
But it is there, but it, it should be, it should be something that, the general plan and that this is where we can probably do a lot better job and, and with the city councils. It's a, it's a working plan. It's something we refer to when we have questions and, and concerns and, um, when a developer wants to do a certain thing, we need to fall back on the general plan. And so I think it's a good foundation for us. There's, I mean, I was, I was quite impressed with the work that's been done. And, but like I said, we're at a crossroads. We're, we're growing, um, needs are changing. And so we need to amend this and address it. So, so again, item four won't be a, a recommendation to the city council. It'll just be a motion amongst our commission. The five will be a recommendation to the city council.
And then Commissioner Prince, you have verbiage on both of those or just the one?
I do.
Okay.
So as far as, that's really what we have, uh, planned for this evening. Um, I think what I'm gonna do as well is, is, uh, as we invite the community to come up. Uh, I know there's some people that have kids, getting ready for school and that. I'm gonna invite the parents with children and maybe someone that's caring for an elderly person. I know when they're coming, maybe allow them to go first. Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
Anyway, that's, that's our agenda. Um, and then again, the, the firm that is representing us in initiating the amendments to the general plan is Wasatch Front Regional Council. So you can just make note of that. And then also, I just wrote down a few things as far as that will impact that we're, that we really need to look at. There might be a couple more too, but I put down streets, our sewer, our transportation, our recreation, our education. I know we've reached out to, uh, an educator and just, you know, what's the impact on this growth to our schools? That's a concern that we need to think about. Uh, recognize, here's, here's one that I never thought of, but I, I was informed that there's actually, uh, um, some historical sites that aren't being preserved. So recognizing and preserving historical sites, commercial development, modern income housing, and our natural resources. And there could be others. Okay, do you have any others to add?
I think one thing we need to look at too, and I don't know if this, how much of it falls under us, but I would like to, there's the city council or whoever's responsible.
I'm sorry, can't read.
Sorry. Looking at our, I just get a lot of feedback.
That's normal, right?
Yes.
You have teenagers.
I do. Um, I would like to see, uh, our impact fees reviewed and see how competitive we are to other cities. See if what we are targeting for development is sufficient to adequately meet the needs of the least, maintaining the infrastructure, everything. I think that's something that also needs to be taken into consideration when we do this. When we put this on.
We also need to look at sewer impact, what capacity are we running at? You know, if there's other capacities, we're gonna see if things other than the sewer, secondary water, and what percentage are we running at? What's the capacity for the future for growth on that, if at all?
You brought up a good point. I remember the first year, what did we talk about? Water, a water tank. So obviously that, you know, we need to find a good spot, a good home for that. Nothing happens without water, for sure. Okay, well noted. Let's see what time it is. Shauna was so nice to... Six forty, got twelve minutes.
Question, where's your sense of how this study will go down? Like who would be doing the boots on the ground, asking a question, analyzing data, collecting data? Is there a budget for it and where is that budget coming from?
I know we got a, a grant. Is that correct, Mayor? We got a grant to open to, to, for the funding of this venture. And as far as, I read it, I hope I brought it with me, but there is kind of a breakdown of what, what is gonna take place. Okay, here we go right here. This is just, this isn't inclusive, but, um, there's probably some things added to it. But there'll be an, an advisory committee formed. And as far as meetings, uh, there'll be a kickoff meeting, which I believe will be the end of this month. There'll be an area analysis, um, whatever that consists of. I'm, I'm sure of just kinda going over what we talked about, those critical points. Uh, then there'll be an outreach round number one. I guess that will be, you know, gathering input from the advisor committee, uh, through the stakeholders and the board committee regarding values, opportunities, and challenges. Draft vision. Then it'll be outreach number two, a refined vision, and then a draft plan. And I know that we have talked about, uh, there will be a survey that I know that we are working on currently. Then we'll go out to each resident so they can interact. And if I'm not mistaken, the, the general plan, we do have the capability of putting that on there. I don't know if it will yet, but we have the capability of putting that on the survey as a Q, is it a QR code or something like that?
That's right, a QR code.
Um, but that's, uh, Box Elder County is kinda the same place we are right now and, and we're looking at what they've done and they've done a, a good job. And so we're probably just gonna do something similar. So there'll be a lot of outreach to the community. They'll have a lot of input. So as far as, does that answer your question, Jacob?
Yeah, that was very helpful.
Okay.
And TLC, that's listed on top of that? Are they, are they called?
I'm not sure.
Government?
I'm not sure what TLC means.
Shauna would know. It's Meg, Alex, Christian, Kate.
Will you, um, when people give public comment, will you just remind them to make sure they sign the roll?
Sign the roll.
Or like even when you start, make sure that they're signing.
Okay. You bet. Hey, what does TLC mean in this? Do you, do you know? I think you typed it.
Uh, it's like Transportation Land Council.
Okay.
It's part of like Wasatch Regional Council.
Okay, it's part of that.
And they're all kinda like, they have like separate entities and things like that.
Okay. So Shauna just said Wasatch Regional, uh, Wasatch Front Regional Council. TLC is part of their Transportation Land Council. So it's part of their, it's under their umbrella.
Okay, great. So, do you have a date for the regional council meeting for next month?
I believe, I, I wanna say it's, it's, I think it's the end of this month, September 21st, but I am not sure. Mary is the, uh, liaison between them and she's out of town, um, until I think Sunday. So we'll be able to get a firm date probably the first of the week, but...
And then what are we doing? The monthly meetings from here on out or is it part of the plan?
Yeah.
The monthly meetings like we normally had or what are your?
I think it's gonna consist, I really don't know. I think it's gonna consist of more meetings, unfortunately, or fortunately. I think it'll require a little bit more time than just once a month.
Sure.
I've heard once a week, but, uh, uh, I don't know yet. Am I okay?
I'm gonna loosen that up so I can keep holding it. Now raise, where do you want it?
There we go, right there. Perfect. That's good.
Is that good?
I'm just a mic grabber, you know? Okay, what time we got now?
Six fifty-three.
One thing that I feel like will be a really important question will be, like, just for example, on this rezone request that we're, it's on our agenda tonight, this is two and a half acres. It, it's so, it's such a, such a minor development. So to tell them that they're gonna be put off for a year and a half for such a small thing seems like pretty drastic. So I wonder if there would be a time when we, we would say, we're gonna revisit this question, like we'll, we'll talk to these people who we're consulting with as far as this whole plan is concerned? Talk to the city staff, talk to people about a recommendation for when we could revisit questions of, like, minor rezones of this nature so that it's not put off indefinitely, you know what I mean?
Sure, I appreciate what you're saying. I just, I still, I feel like we, we need to be consistent. And whether it, I understand that it's smaller, but it's still a rezone. And if, you know, it looked like there was kind of a projected timetable maybe that was included in the packet that Shauna sent us.
Yeah, yeah, it's about a one-year timetable that's at the end of the, the packet.
And so I think, you know, when it, when it talks about in the current general plan that, that we should be able to review during a static period. Static means nothing is moving. I just, it's really difficult, um, to make a plan when things are constantly in motion. And just like with the subdivision that came up last time, they came in with 52 acres and then they said, well, can we do it smaller then? Can we do it smaller? And we've had some subdivisions where they've got quite a large parcel, but then they said, well, we'll just do three for now. And...
And then do three at a time?
Yeah, and then we're in the same, we're in the same situations.
And I think the important thing is, is the 10-9A-509 states that we have the authority to stall. It's not like we're overreaching our bounds or anything that way. We have the authority to do that as long as we're committed to do it. And I think since we went that route last month, I think we need to be consistent across the board.
Yeah. I guess a good example, you can't favor one child over the other.
Right.
You know? Hey, we're just, uh, we're just taking a timeout, you know? We're gonna resume play eventually, but we're gonna take a timeout for a bit. All right, so. Time, we got five minutes. Anything else?
It's getting a little chilly.
Getting chilly, well, hopefully you're helping free your coat.
It looks like Mary did tell me September 21st at 6:00 PM here at the city building, we're gonna be with the regional council.
Okay. September 21st?
So Mary says otherwise, that's what, the last I heard.
That's when we're meeting.
6:00 PM for the advisory council. Uh, Wasatch for a regional council.
Isn't there a song about the 21st day of September?
You wanna sing it?
Maybe next time.
Let's see, get my stopwatch on. Okay, so Nate's gonna do the pledge and Amanda will do the reverence.
Right.
Okay. We'll let you. You've got three minutes. I'll get my, throw my coat on too, for ten minutes.
I should've brought my coat.
Do we have a flag? Oh, there's one right there. Your husband gonna bring a coat for you?
He's right there and I have, he has his no on top.
Do I'm gonna call my wife? I'll call Lori.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah. I'll be okay.
Blocking your warm sun.
That's okay, that's all right.
I texted my wife.
You did?
Yeah.
Is she coming?
Yeah, she's coming.
Okay.
But she'll probably be, she probably has more to her party. Hopefully she saw it right, 'cause she's always late.
Well, it's something I usually have.
I can't believe he forgot. He had to give you a kiss.
Well, I didn't tell him to bring me one.
Oh.
I just thought maybe he would, and he would, he would give me one. I know, but I, I have family coming to my sister, too. Garrett, my brother.
Oh, she didn't bring a coat. There she is.
That's okay, don't, don't worry. Well, she didn't bring one for herself.
She didn't? I told her to.
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Seven o'clock. Y'all refreshed? All right, it, uh, looks like it's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone to our planning commission, uh, this Thursday, September 10th, 2020. We'll go ahead and have a pledge allegiance by Nate, Councilman Nate Platt.
Commissioner.
Our commissioner, excuse me, thank you. You always surround yourself with good people. And then Amanda Prince will give us a reverence. So please rise for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Our Father in heaven, we are so very grateful to be gathered together today to discuss the needs of our city. We're grateful for this beautiful country that we live in, for the freedoms and blessings that we enjoy. We thank thee for a good community who is invested and who cares for each other. We're grateful for the opportunity to discuss the needs of that community and we ask that thy Spirit would please be with us to help us to make wise decisions and to be in tune with the needs of those who we represent and serve. Heavenly Father, we thank thee so very much for all that thou hast given us and we ask that thou would please bless our country. Please bless the leaders of this country that they will make decisions that will unite us and bring us closer to thee. Please help us to have thy Spirit to be with us throughout this night and we say these things humbly in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nate, Amanda. Again, welcome, everyone. Um, we'd like to excuse Mary Simpson, our planning commission chair. She is out of town and so I am, uh, doing this instead. Uh, first item of business, this is a public meeting. Um, first item of business is approval of the minutes, planning meeting, planning meeting commission minutes dated August 13th, 2020. Uh, has the commissioners had all the chance to review them?
Yes.
Anything that needs to be added to or changed?
Thanks, Senator.
Okay. Seek a motion to approve the minutes from August 13th, 2020?
A motion that we approve the minutes of August 13th, 2020?
Commissioner Platt has motioned that we approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Jacob has seconded. So the minutes stand?
All in favor?
Oh, oh, all in favor.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, our first item of business is a conditional use permit for an oversized structure for Steve Want located at 3563 South, 5425 West. It's a 2,400-foot structure, 40 by 60 by 20. Um, it will have plumbing, it will have electricity. It will not be used for a business and its main purpose is to store, uh, lots of toys. It says, I'll just read this here. It says, "Use of structure storage of classic cars." He's got some nice ones, 69 Chevelle, 73 Porsche, a couple of them, 69 Camaro, 62 Chevrolet Corvette. I don't think they're all gonna fit in there. Uh, an AMG, motorcycles anyways, a lot of his toys and pride, pride and possessions. Noise, none except for when pulling in or out of vehicles. Odors, uh, there'll be none when vehicles are all well-maintained and proper in condition. Vehicles are all well-maintained and proper in condition. Easements none, parking none. Design is in general still manufactured, still building. Is there a representative, is Steve here by chance? Is Steve here?
No, Steve.
Okay, commissioners, uh, do you have any questions that, reviewing this?
Well, I, I look fine, according to the ordinance, it looks good on you.
Yeah, it looks like he's done a well, he's got a well-laid out plan and, uh, it's gonna be nicely landscaped and just enhance his property. Open for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to step to the microphone and address the, or his petition to have a conditional use permit for this oversized structure? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners. Any thoughts? Anyone want to entertain a motion?
Yeah, it looks pretty cut and dry to me. I, I'll motion that we give approval for a conditional use permit for an oversized structure at thirty-five sixty-three south, fifty-four twenty-five west.
Commissioner Prince has motioned that we approve the conditional use permit. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Commissioner Jacob has seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion is passed. Um, the second item of, this is a public hearing. First of all, is, is there, is Rob Miles here by chance? Or Brant Miles? Anybody that represents this conditional use per, or excuse me, for a rezone of R one to R two for the fielding property? Is anybody here? Okay. So, we could probably, instead of, uh, he, he kinda knew what was gonna happen on this, so at this point.
Still be public comments, if there's any comments in the original.
Is there any public comments? He was requesting a, a rezoning from R one to R two on the property of forty-six hundred south and sixty-three hundred west. It's a two-and-a-half acre piece that they wanted to subdivide and build custom homes on. Um, we could go ahead and open up for public comment if there is anybody that wants to comment on that before we Okay, seeing none, we'll turn it back to the commis-, oh, somebody whistled? Turn it back to commissioners for us to decide what to do with it.
So last month, during our planning commission meeting, we had a discussion about a possible rezone for a different property and chose to table that in anticipation of something that is coming up this meeting and in, uh, in the spirit of consistency, um, I think that we've discussed and decided that it would be best to table this, um, rezone request. Just in anticipation of the other items that we're gonna be discussing here in just a minute.
Okay, so did you have a
So that's not a motive, but that's a motion, but I, I, and the question is, before I make a motion, what's your feeling about a time limit on tabling it? Or should we just, no, we, should we, yeah, the last, last month, we just, we chose to table an item until November to bring it up for discussion again.
My suggestion on, my suggestion on that would be, uh, to avoid tabling it without a date, you gotta table it with, with the date. Then at that point, um, you know more about the city's position on rezones during the general plan, you can only suppress it then. Uh, rather than having it just in no man's land, uh, it couldn't be back on the agenda. So I would recommend, if you're gonna table it, table it to the same date that you did the other one, even if it's just to bring it up again or revisit whatever may be happening with the general plan and the city's position on rezones.
That's good.
I agree. Good advice.
Well, with that in mind, I, um, would make a motion that we table the discussion of the rezone of this fielding property of forty-six hundred south, sixty-three hundred west until our planning commission, commission meeting in November of twenty twenty.
Okay, Commissioner Draper has, uh, motioned that we table this request for R one to R two at the fielding property, forty-six hundred south, fifty-three hundred west, sixty-three hundred west until November. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Prince has seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Okay, now, item number four is, is what probably most of you have been here anticipating. The city, uh, we have been in dire need to open the general plan and to, uh, discuss a lot of things happening in the city. The city's growing rapidly and we're really and truly at a crossroads in a point in time that, uh, what we decide now is gonna determine what Hooper looks like in the future. And so what we are gonna do is, uh, make a motion to, amongst our council, to do a comprehensive amendment of the general plan, which will consist of many different areas. Uh, you know, we have, as we talked in our work meeting, you know, our streets, our sewer capacities, our water, our transportation, recreation, education, recognizing and preserving historical sites, commercial development, modern income housing, natural resources. And there could be others too, as, as we grow. We just wanna make sure that we do it in the correct way and the, and the right way that, you know, our, our children will be proud of and it'll be a community that's unique amongst the state of Utah. I think we have an opportunity to be unique and not like everybody else. The, the commissioners, before I open it up for public comment, would you like to say anything?
Uh, yeah, I'll just, um, say, there's gonna be numerous meetings on this and numerous public meetings, so realize this is not just the one we're meeting tonight, it is gonna be public comment when we dig in deeper and we do the different separate meetings, like on parks and recreation and the different sewer, whatever we're doing that way, that will be, uh, an opportunity for public comment as well. So if you don't feel like you're gonna get hurt tonight, there'll be ample opportunity to do that. This process will probably be over the next year or two, year and a half, is basically what we talked about. We'll come up with more dates after November and, and really see how long this process is gonna be, but, um, it's not just gonna be settled tonight. Something to keep in mind when you come up for public comment, and what is limited to three minutes. But, um, why did you come to Hooper? Why do you live here? What brought you here if you're not native to Hooper? Uh, what would you like to see done? Just some general ideas tonight to give us feedback on, so we do have the meeting, uh, with the twenty-first of this month with the Wasatch Regional Council. They helped us with these decisions of opening up the general plan, what can be done, uh, what we should be talking about. Just help us, this is your, this is your time. For the last three years, we've been on the planning commission. We always get public comment that nothing can change, that you're kinda set in stone. Well, they were set in stone while the general plan was closed, but now that we opened the general plan, things are not set in stone. And with your feedback, uh, we can, we can take recommendations and and we're all citizens of Hooper, we like to, to make up what the citizens want. So this will be coming to the listeners and all get feedback, so.
Thank you.
Um, I prepared just a little bit to say on this. As far as the need to do this, there's been a lot of change in Hooper, a lot of developments since the last general plan was put in place in twenty fourteen. There's a lot of, the plan is very extensive and there's a lot of things in that plan that have not been followed through on. And, and I, I think most people probably did not anticipate the amount of growth that was going to happen when that plan was put in place. Um, I'm a big supporter of private property rights, but rules and regulations exist for a reason and very seldom, if ever, do our actions only affect us. While I can understand and appreciate the financial motivation for a property owner and developer to convert a piece of farmland to a residential development, we have to take into consideration the impact of that action. Take for instance, a new development that contains seventy-five homes. On average, you'll have two adult drivers at each residence as well as any teenage drivers who may be living in the home. That's a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty-five and up, more cars driving on our roads, causing increased wear and tear. And that, that is just one proposed subdivision. The increased traffic also prevents possible, or presents possible safety issues. There is also the issue of our natural resources. Hooper only has so much water available and Hooper actually doesn't have one drop of water that is ours that comes from Hooper. Uh, we get our water from the Uwena Mountains and from Willard Bay. Uh, the class sizes in our schools are already overflowing and while this may not fall under the jurisdiction of Hooper City, it is still something that needs to be considered. As more and more housing is put in, the country fill that many of us love and cherish will begin to diminish and if we are not very careful, we will find ourselves in the same boat as some of our surrounding cities with decreased property values and diminished quality of living. In gathering feedback from the upcoming, in the upcoming review of the general plan, I spoke with several residents. One of the residents that I spoke with, uh, moved here in Ho-, to Hooper in two thousand and six. She had previously resided in Clinton. She lived there prior to the Walmart and surrounding development going in. She recalled the promises that were repeatedly made to the citizens of Clinton, that their city would retain the country fill. I know when I drive through Clinton, I don't, I don't see country there. And I believe that the people that made the decisions to take Clinton in that direction did so probably with good intentions. There are a lot of changes that have happened here in Hooper over the last several years that were probably based on good intentions as well. However, a lot of those changes have not been in harmony with what several of the residents that I've spoken with have wanted for the city. Um, a lot of times rezones have been approved simply because the current general plan allows them to be. However, just because we can rezonate doesn't mean we necessarily should. In speaking with many of the residents here, I found that there is a strong concern that the hopes and wishes of what the majority of citizens in Hooper want for our city are being put on the back burner to accommodate the push to develop. As we conduct this comprehensive study of the general plan, we will really rely a great deal on what you, the citizens of Hooper, tell us that you want to have happen. This is your opportunity to express your wishes for what you want for our city and that's what it is, it's our city. We are the ones that get to decide what we want. I've heard it stated several times that growth is coming and we just need to embrace it and accept it. And my question is why? This is our city and we get to decide what happens with it. We should never allow outside entities with financial or other motivated motives to dictate or push us into something that we do not want. Many people don't realize that when these developments go in, they don't benefit us financially. City, the property taxes go to the county, they don't come to the city. And so it's, uh, the, these are things that we need to take into consideration. Um, we need to talk about the open spaces, the parks, uh, and recreation. We need to talk about transportation and the safety issues, uh, impact fees. Things that go along with development, are they high enough that they're, they're covering the cost of the things that need to be taken care of once these developers are done? And I, I'm not anti-development, I feel like I can be objective. I live in a subdivision that was new. It's a newer subdivision out here in Hooper. Um, I understand, I grew up out here, I love Hooper and I, I understand the pull of wanting to live out here and to raise your family out here. And I would like to see more leniency given on current property owners and maybe some of, maybe building onto their home, maybe they have an acre next to them that a grown son or daughter wants to move back here and, and build on so that they can raise their family out here. I think our priorities should be given to the people that live out here versus outside development that wants to come in. And that doesn't mean I'm anti-development. I just feel like it needs to be done responsibly and we need to be united in purpose and the purpose should be the needs of the people that live out here and what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wanna say anything before we open up public comment? No, I'm okay. Okay, now we're gonna go ahead and open it, open it up for public comment. Couple of things we'd like, we'd request that you do. Make sure you have signed the, signed in on the roll. As you come to the microphone, state your name and your address and like Nate mentioned, also tell us why you, what attracted you to Hooper. Um, your comments will be limited to three minutes. If somebody says something you've already said, I mean, maybe you could briefly go over that and just say I agree with them and, and kinda bring up another comment. Also, if there's anyone here that's caring for children or an elderly person that needs to get home, that might not be able to stay at home, we'd invite you to come first. Um, I know you might not want to, but you, you're invited and welcome to come first so you can have your say, um, without waiting till the end. So at this point, we will, uh, go ahead, go ahead and open it up for public comment on what we've just discussed.
My, my name is George Black. I live at sixty-seven west fifty-two hundred south. And we moved a few years ago to like the rural community, like the, uh, the things that Amanda said. Now I have a couple of questions before we begin. First of all, Amanda, was that your statement or is that reflected in the
That's my personal statement.
Okay, anybody else on the commission, do they have things that they would like to discuss before we proceed?
I, I'm in pretty much accord with what Amanda said. Um, I'm, I'm on board with that.
So my comment is, now you've been working on this for how long? I mean, you've already looked at the existing plan, is that correct? And made some adjustments or amendments?
We have not at this point. This council has not done that and that's why, you know, there, there has to be a process to do it correctly.
I just wanted to bring that up to make sure that this is the baseline, that
It is.
Everyone here is gonna give their input and you're gonna work on that for the next, how long?
As long as it takes. Probably, probably a year, a year plus.
Well, it strikes me, the sooner the better because things are rooting pretty fast. Um, our, our son is moving here and we've found out that, uh, real estate in Hooper is a hot property these days. And I think that things are gonna move faster than slower, so I totally encourage you to move as fast as you can.
Appreciate that.
We have currently, I, we have been getting feedback. We are in the process of doing that, so that has begun.
Thank you.
Wayne Whittison, I live at fifty-five thirty-three south, seventy-one hundred west. I came to Hooper for mosquitoes, the big mosquitoes, and I have not been disappointed. But the reason I wanted to come to the meeting tonight was to talk about a portion of Hooper that very few people ever think about. Uh, it's three thousand acres, it's Fremont Island. Uh, I sat in on the, or listened in on the city council meeting a few weeks ago to discuss this and I, I noticed the council was open to suggestions and, and welcomed the public input, so I'm going to offer one tonight. Uh, I mentioned we've got three thousand island, uh, acres out there. Uh, currently, it looks just like it did five hundred years ago. And except for occasional burning, it's, it could stay that way. But my point is, it's up to our city fathers, you and the council, to make some wise decisions. Of course, that area is privately owned. Uh, but they, the owners have sought out some contractors to perhaps develop it. Here's an idea for development. Is to utilize that piece of property to benefit some of the least served members of our state. And in particular, the five Native American tribes. Uh, that would be an ideal location to, uh, possibly build a resort and allow uh, the five Indian tribes to manage and operate that, that resort and give them an opportunity to benefit uh, for their own societies and their own personal incomes and, and, and an opportunity to keep their youth here. Uh, the benefit of that to Hooper is that Hooper has pretty much full access to that as far as, uh, road control. You know, I, I can envision turning fifty-five hundred into a four-lane freeway. Uh, sounds kinda crazy, but, but anyways, Hooper could certainly benefit from, from the taxes and from one of their other financial benefits if that island is properly developed. Uh, the, the proposal from the developers is to put ten thousand doorways or front doors, if you will. And I'm really not the big idea of that, but a resort on the back side where we cannot see it from here would be a financial benefit to the state, to the county, to Hooper and to us as citizens. And a blessing in a way to, uh, the Native American tribes. That would take a lot of work and coordination and somebody with a lot of drive to make that happen. Now, but I, I think it's something that I'd be
About thirty seconds.
I'll be done by then.
You're right.
But anyways, I want you to cons-, to seriously consider that rather than just brush it off as, oh, no, we, we can't have that. We'd rather have, you know, just horses and ATVs out there, but there may be opportunities for those and some of these other things. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mike. We will definitely, uh, be calling you because there are some things with Fremont that has just transpired this week that I don't know if I can say, but anyway, there will not be five thousand homes out there, so. And the, the mayor has put together some people in place to help with the natural resources and things. That's a great idea. We appreciate that. That's kinda thing we're That's kind of the thing we're looking for. Who's next?
I live on 6294 West, 4600 South. The reason why we came out to Hooper, we lived up in Roy, kind of by Kent's Market, we around a half acre. We came out so that we could have just a little bit more land, so we could be on an acre and so that we could have things that you can't have otherwise if you don't have an acre. For instance, out here in the morning, roosters, you hear roosters all the time. That's something that gives you the country feel out here in the farm field. And that's what we're out here for. So that if we want to have roosters and chickens or ducks or cows or horses, that's what Hooper is. Hooper is the farmland. We're all self-sufficient. We help each other, just like with all these crises that have been happening on our Hooper City community page. So many people have been out helping everybody else and so all somebody has to do is say, I need some help and someone's there. We have the little food bank things that are all around Hooper for people to come and get food. It's just a small town, homely field. And if you start rezoning everything to a half an acre, quarter acre, or postage stamp size, we're not gonna have that feel anymore. We're gonna lose contact with everybody and people aren't gonna be able to have the things that we all have. People will start complaining about the smell from the horses and about the noise from the roosters. And there will be so much complaint that will come up that we won't be able to have those things anymore. We moved out here for that feel, for the ability to be able to live in a small town. I grew up in Ogden. Ogden is not a small town. Hooper is a small town and it's where I wanted to raise my kids and where my grandkids love to come. Because they can walk around, see horses, see cows, see goats, and they love it out here because it's farm. And they love to come to Grandma and Grandpa's and be able to see all of the animals. We don't want that taken away. We want Hooper to stay the way it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take this off while I'm talking. My name is Renee Johnson. Looking around the crowd, I would suspect that I came to Hooper a lot before most of it, almost anybody here did. I came to Hooper because my parents brought me home from the hospital here 72 years ago onto a farm that my great-grandfather, my grandfather, and my father all farmed. I am absolutely not pro-development, not by a mile. But those of us who have family farms and don't have any more farmers are stuck between a rock and a hard place. And it's not comfortable. We love Hooper. We want to keep the feel that's here. And at the same time, my siblings and I are in our 60s, 70s. Our parents passed away 10 years ago and we're still trying to get that estate settled because the estate, all that's left of it now is the farm. And we have obligations to our children, our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren to do the best that we can for them in terms of taking care of that legacy and taking care of it for them. So I simply wanted to take the microphone for a minute to draw attention to that because it's not as simple, keep it as it is or develop it. There are really complex issues involved for all of us. And honestly, the reason we waited 10 years to do anything with the farm is because we didn't want to. We like it the way it is. But the financial reality is that we can't dump that onto our children and make them take care of it. We need to do something about it and we need to do it as responsibly as we can for them and for our children, our grandchildren, grandchildren. So that's my comment. Please keep that into consideration.
Thank you, Amanda.
My name is Ada Parker Beaufort. And my grandfather was one of the forefathers of this town that brought the water, originally digging the ditches.
Wait, have you just said Hooper?
Oh, come on, reminds me, I'm tall. And I would really like to thank you for all having this great celebration for my sister and I tonight because it's our birthday.
Happy birthday.
And we're not twins. But we are farmers, absolutely, all of us. That's what we would love to do. And I'm in a situation where I want to still farm and I can't do it here because I'm not an only child. I'm the youngest and I have an obligation to my siblings for them to have their share as well as me have my share of what land we have left. I just put an offer on 47 acres that direction. Now that breaks my heart because I would love to farm here, but I can't. So if you can solve that little problem for me, I would love to hear that. Because as a landowner, I would love to farm here. And that's what most of these people here are saying, is keep our farms, keep the land open. We are farmers, but we can't afford to farm, not here, not anymore. So how do you solve that problem is my question to you.
Thank you.
My name is Leela Vervey. I live at 5976 West, 5500 South. I have been a member for a year. I sat to sign the paperwork on my granddaughter's birthday five years ago, October 29th. She was born and I came in to sign the paperwork for my home. We are, my husband and I, my husband was military for 25 years. We traveled many locations and we chose Hooper because we loved it. We looked around, we lived in Cheyenne, we lived in Colorado and different locations. But when we found Hooper, it was home. It was everything we wanted to come back to. See, my husband and I were from Arizona originally and I grew up right off the option in the reservation. And I grew up with pecan fields and cotton fields right on my horses. And then the option reservation decided to build a casino. Well, what happened when you built a casino, things start to grow. And it grew. And the cotton fields became homes and the pecan fields became stores. And my graduating class of 36 kids where everybody knew everybody, nobody knows anybody anymore. And so we didn't go back to it there because it wasn't the lifestyle we wanted. After 25 years, the news, we chose here because of the openness and the people. To be able to, my granddaughter, my two-year-old granddaughter is now living with me and she can go in the backyard and play. And she can go in the front yard and play and the traffic isn't where I have to worry about her being ran over. Or, you know, she can enjoy it. Or my daughter, when she comes home, Mom, let's go riding. We get on the horses and we go riding. If Hooper grows to a point to where the pecan, you know, referencing my old lifestyle, the pecan fields are gone, the cotton fields are gone, so is the riding the horses in Hooper because the traffic will be astronomical. It will be unsafe. And so at that point, we trailer our horses to go somewhere to ride. I'm not a good public speaker. I came because I feel that this is important because we're looking longevity. My kids love it so much here that they're saying, Mom, when you pass, we want the home. We want to live here. We love it here. So my children and my grandchildren want to be here. But for how long? If it changes to where it's not Hooper anymore, then they're gonna have to go elsewhere. So I hope that you'll consider the fact that we'd love to keep it to where my granddaughter can play in the front yard and be safe. And my daughter and I can ride our horses and be safe and have horses and have my milk cow that I love dearly. So I would really, I appreciate if you would keep that and just my few words in consideration and hopefully we can all come together. I know change is inevitable, but there's a way of doing it to where we don't lose what Hooper stands for. And I thank you for letting me be part of your community.
Thank you.
A little question for you. And just everybody that comes up, we're not taking notes, but bullet points, what would be the two bullet points, Hooper that you'd like to look in the future, like acres? You'd like acres rather than half acres? You'd like no growth? You'd like to see that land used now, really tightened up and growth really limited? What would...
No growth is impossible. That's inevitable. Growth is going to happen. And I realize that there's people here that have lots of land that, you know, again, that they're like, what do we do with it? I understand that. But there's also people that want to farm and that want to have that. So I'm not sure. I'm really the one to ask. I wish I could give you an exact answer as to how I can move forward and maybe that's something I can look at in the future, but you have to understand, I was military and lived in military quarters for the past, like I said, for 25 years. I lived in townhomes where we were stacked on each other. You couldn't get away, you could not breathe. But we knew within three to four years, we were gonna go somewhere else. So we got to know people and we got to do things. But it was not the lifestyle that you would want to do the rest of your life by any means. As far, you know, I don't know. I would like to see where at least the acres could be so that it continues to be a more farming rule feel, if that's what it has to be. But growing, like I said, raising my children, my kids were military brats, so they lived on top stacked on people for all that time. And now my daughter goes out and she's like, God, this is so great. We're sitting on the porch swing watching the sunset, which you can't see in military quarters. There is none. It's hot and it's roads and it's buildings and that's it. And even in the military, the growth was astronomical. I mean, from one base to the X, as they started to grow, you lose. You're losing. I will look into and talk to people a little because Hooper's my first home. I moved out of my parents' house when I was 19 years old, married my junior high sweetheart. And so that, this is actually the first home we've ever purchased. That's how, and that's why we worked so hard and so long to find the right home.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I suppose that come up, if everybody at the end of your statement, except for all of you, you know, it's at the end of your statement, if you can kind of give us one or two bullet points of, well, this is what we want, this is what we're looking for, so we can get a consensus of Hooper.
My name is Beverly Parker Ellsworth. I am Ada's sister. I'd like to enforce and support what she said. We are owners of the family of H.L. Parker Farms. Our parents were very hard-working dairy farmers. We grew up farm kids. We understand the culture of Hooper. As she said, our great-grandfather was one of the pioneers that dug the ditch to get water to Hooper. We are Hooper residents and that's our hometown. We also are getting old. We're grandparents. Our two brothers that are still farming are 60 and 69 years old. None of our children want to farm. So we are left with this legacy of what do we do with the land? We started, we're not professional developers and we haven't wanted to be or tried to be. We started with some lots. Over on the Davis County side, we sold seven lots. They are beautiful homes. Several of the owners of those homes were young couples who were raised in Hooper who were thrilled to be able to get a lot. It was a full acre lot and are very happy that they're close to their families. It has taken us three years to get eight more lots ready to develop, ready to sell in Hooper. Just three years to fulfill all of the requirements for Hooper, that Hooper City required. We requested, we are the family that requested to have the home place rezoned. We have no intention of developing the whole thing. We were advised, you know, just get it done all at once because it's such a trouble to go through all of that. We have since revised that down to a much smaller amount, to 18 acres. We are not ever intending on selling the whole farm. We have two strong roots there. The deed to my great-grandparents' property has the name of Edmund Parker from 1870. I am, at least me and several of my siblings are sentimental. We want to hold on to that farm legacy and hopefully do something with it. But we do feel like there is some kind of urgency almost. Today is my 73rd birthday. I'm not gonna live forever. I am the trustee for this family. I feel an urgency to get this settled in my lifetime. I don't want to leave it to 34 grandchildren so they can fight over it. So I guess I'm begging and pleading, I was rightful to hear that there is some kind of a answer. We can't wait for years and years for this to go on. And what we'd really like to do, we have tried really hard to be responsible with our development, to make it an addition to the community, to not have it add any negative thing to the community. That's not what our goal is. We've tried really hard to plan and to think it through and do it in small phases so that we can, we're not big developers, we don't want to go into huge debt.
Just a few more seconds.
Okay. So I guess I'm respectfully requesting that you consider doing small amounts at a time. I understand the concern, it will change the community. But we would really like to see it so that people who grew up here in Hooper, that their children and grandchildren can also have a lot, that they could build a lovely home in Hooper.
Thank you, Beverly.
I'm Eric Young, I'm a little bit 5260 South, 6200 West in Hooper. Very proud to stand with my mom, Renee, you heard from us a minute ago. I spent my entire 51 years in Hooper and I loved Hooper, I knew of it, it was phenomenal. But I tell people all the time, it's gone. It's not coming back, folks. When you think about a long-term development plan or city plan, if you're thinking about half acre and acre lots, you forgot the one thing you need for a plan, it's vision. If you don't find vision for where the city's gonna be branded and developed and economically sustainable in the future, then you have lost all sign of what your long-term plan needs to be. You're absolutely right. Rooftops are not gonna support the city in the future. It's not gonna support law enforcement, it's not gonna support fires, it's not gonna support streets. You have to have a plan that's gonna support the city economically and keep it viable in the future. A half acre lot versus an acre lot is not the difference of whether Hooper's a farming community or not. It's just not the fact. What's gonna drive development in the city is not whether you have half acre lots or acre lots, it's gonna be the market, the demand for housing, and it is gonna come. So you need to find a vision for what your city wants to look like, how much open space you can preserve, and try and brand your city for the future to be sustainable. You're lost in the weeds if you're working on half acre and acre lots because that's not the big picture. You're at 1,000 feet instead of 10,000 feet in your plan. Because as I said, half acre versus acre lot, most of the people who live on half acre lots farther up east than Hooper don't ever make it down to the west part of Hooper to see the acre lots. They just still see what farms are left, but those farms are gonna slowly go away because you've heard over and over, it's not economically feasible to run a large farm in Hooper and it's just shrinking and shrinking. So I just, I guess my bullet point would be, get out of the weeds, get up to 10,000 feet and think about a long-term vision for the future of Hooper rather than a half acre lot versus acre lot. Because that's not gonna solve your problems to make Hooper what it is in the long-term. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
One thing I do want to mention, when we do this comprehensive review of the general plan, we will be looking at the possibility of, you know, some different commercial type, not talking big box type things, but maybe having a main street or something like that where we have some nostalgic type businesses. That's where we will get some money from is from having businesses out here in Hooper, not from the residential side of that. I just wanted to interject that because I don't know if you mentioned that before or not, but...
I'm Angie Erickson. I live on 5025 South, 4700 West. And I don't even know where you went, sorry. A woman came up a few people ago and she mentioned how she wanted the military lady. Where are you? Okay, there you are. Kind of jumping off of her, what she talked about, about how she liked that her kids could go out in the front yard and play, that they could ride horses down the road. On 4700, I don't let my kids play in the front yard, it's not safe. I don't let my kids walk down the sidewalks because they're not maintained. So they have to, and I have a four and a five-year-old, or excuse me, a five and a six-year-old who love to ride their scooters, but they can't go down the sidewalk because the weeds grow over the sidewalks and so they're going out into the road. And people speed down that road and we rarely ever have anyone out there enforcing the speed. And so as the city grows, we're gonna see that more and more. And I want a plan in place for that so we're not stuck with all these sidewalks that aren't usable, that our kids are having to go out into the road anyways because they can't go down them. I would like to see a minimum of, you know, if we do half acre lots, have areas where there are half acre lots. Or if we have any quarter acre lot sections that they are closer to thoroughfares and not in the middle of a bunch of one acre lots. that they are closer to thoroughfares and not in the middle of a bunch of one acre lots. Um, traffic where we're at is inevitable, but, um, I would just, I would like to see plans in place. I like what this guy said, I'm sorry, I'm going to get names, but I didn't, Eric, I like what Eric said. Um, I want to plan for open space. I would love to brand Hooper. And we moved out here for property. We, we moved out here so we could have animals, so we could, this was where we could afford it. We came from Salt Lake. My husband commutes to Lehigh, where he did before this. And I gave him an out, I was like, this is one heck of a drive, let's move. We can go south, we can go to Farmington and, and live in a house. And he was like, no, not for anything. He makes the commute because he loves this, this community so much. And the tomatoes is cute. I love the tomatoes, Hooper tomatoes, but why not brand us as a horse community? Everyone has horses. There are other communities around the state and around the country that are horse communities and they have riding arenas, they have, you know, instead of bike paths, they have horse paths that have signs with horses on them and just letting people know. Because I can't, I have a horse, I can't ride him on my street, it's not safe. Um, and so that's just.
About 20 seconds.
That's all I have to say. So anyways, thank you for your time and, um, I'm really excited you guys are opening this up and, uh, look forward to seeing how this progresses.
Thank you.
My name is Andrea Witterson. I live at 5533 South, 7100 West. And we've heard from a number of people that have moved here for the country atmosphere. And I think we can all agree that that is what makes Hooper special. I don't think there's anyone here that would contest that, that we all love those same things about Hooper. We love the sunset, we love the mountains, mountain views, we love the open fields and the farms and the sounds of tractors working late into the night. And people move out here specifically because it's a great place to raise your family. Now, there's still a lot of open space for farming here on the west side of town. And we all know that development can't be held off forever. It's going to happen, it's inevitable. We've seen it happen everywhere else and it's going to happen here. And we also know that this generation of farmers is probably going to be the last generation to be able to farm in Hooper simply because the economics are not there any longer. There's not enough land in order to be commercially feasible to run a farm. And as the farmland gets converted into developments, there'll become less and less of it. So the question that I think that the, the planning commission and the council have to address is, when those farms go away, what are we going to replace them with? How are we going to keep that same quality of life? We've, we've seen the general plan, uh, talk about the open and, uh, people talk about preserving open space and having trails and parks and things, but, um, we really haven't seen very much of that. It's because the parcels that have been sold are not connected. So it's very difficult to plan a trail system or anything that's contiguous. Um, and so I think we need to revisit that idea and figure out, what are we going to use this farmland for? When it's sold off all for development, then there's not going to be any open space left. So if the city wants to have open space, you're going to have to write that into the general plan and it's going to have to, you have to find a way to finance that, whether it be mandatory set-asides on developments over a certain number of acres, have to allow certain number of, um, a certain percentage of open space that is not just water catch basins for, for mosquito hatcheries. And we would, we would like to see a master plan that includes that open space and that maybe puts aside money for a land bank in order to purchase those parcels and see, or find a way to connect them so that we can have the horse trails that people want, so that we can have, um, urban parks that we don't presently have. We have the park in the center of town, but as the, as the town builds out to the west and it's eventually going to reach all the way out to the lake bank.
About 20 seconds.
We're going to need more open space. So I've lived in six states and this is by far the best place that I've ever lived. And I'd like to see Hooper keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Matt Malone. We live at 6170 West, 4600 South. And we've lived here for three years. My wife's family goes way back, they, over 100 years, her family's been in this area and decided to raise our family. Have loved it. Our kids have the best experience in the world growing up here. First of all, I want to thank you guys for your service. We talk about Hooper, you guys are doing something about it. You're representing us and we appreciate that. Because, uh, you're, you're putting, uh, your money where your mouth is by being away from the family, dedicating your time to our, to our town and our city. Thank you. Um, I think as far as the, what I picture, Hooper being, I appreciate the fact that you're readdressing the, the five year, or the, the plan, the city plan. Things change in six years drastically. And I think as that gets reevaluated, it's important to have the vision that was talked about. And granted, we all don't have crystal balls on what it's going to look like down the road. But the more comprehensive and detailed that is, the more we can control our future. And we can't worry about what outside entities think is best for us. And we have to do what's best for ourselves. We can't outgrow our, our base, our support base. We can't outgrow our, our city structure, our, our roads, our sewer, things like that. It has to be very methodical and well thought out on that timing of that growth, on where we're going to go. Uh, what I pictured, what I would love to picture Hooper being like in the future would be, uh, we're always going to be a veteran community. We're always going to be a fruit heights or a Farmington. People aren't going to come out here shocked. Uh, whatever tax base is growing here will be to help, to help the people of Hooper. And that's what we want it to be. With that in mind, I think it's important that we structure our town around the fact that as a veteran community, uh, it's what we want, open space, uh, wonderful parks, uh, trail systems for horses and for, for bikers and bikers and our children, things like that. You have a big, a big, big job ahead of you. And I hope that the input we give you as citizens will help you structure that, that part of your plan while it will be acceptable to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, I'm Amber Kelso. I live at 5181 South, 5950 West. And I do not like public speaking, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't stand up and, um, say what I thought, um, in, to stand with Hooper. I've lived here 35 years. Um, I was born and raised here, but I did move to Roy when, after I was married. And that was because we couldn't afford to live in Hooper. Um, it was really expensive even then, um, for us starting out. Um, but we, we realized that we wanted to get back to Hooper and it was worth saving up and, um, just to get back here. Um, I kind of jotted down a couple of notes because I'm terrible at speaking, but I also agree with what, um, George Buck said, that Hooper land is a hot commodity. Um, we recently, my sister recently sent me an article saying that Hooper, um, was rated as the number one richest city on, um, some certain art, uh, study that had come out. And I think there's a huge draw to move here because of what we've been able to preserve thus far. Um, I worry though, that if that development continues in the direction that it is, that eventually like our long-term residents and people who've lived out here aren't going to be able to afford it anymore, kind of like what's happened in Heber City where, um, property taxes and such went up so much that, um, then those people who had paid off their homes and had lived there their whole lives couldn't live there anymore because they simply couldn't afford the property taxes. Um, having lived out here most of my life, I have observed, uh, many changes, some good and some bad. Like I know some people say the water is bad now, um, compared to what it was when I was growing up. Um, every morning I ride my bike with my children through the beautiful countryside of Hooper and we enjoy the fields and the cows and the magnificent skies. And as I ride through there, every time I think about how Hooper is, I've realized over the years that it's like my Green Gables. And those of you guys who are out of Green Gables will understand that reference. Um, I love Hooper and I'd like to see our town stay much the same with slow growth, focused on the residents and families that live here. Um, like the one Gal said, like people trying to build on their property for their families to live out here. You know, I think that's great. I think those people understand the vision of Hooper and they want to preserve it.
Yeah, about 20 seconds.
Okay. Um, so I just think Hooper's a unique and rare place and that it deserves to be preserved and protected. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Pao. I'm right across the street at 5560, uh, 69, right across the street. I'm originally from Hawaii, uh, moved here in 2014 and I've watched in amazement as this place is growing crazy. Uh, what I'd like to bring up is what I saw happen in Hawaii and one of the reasons why I had to leave here and come here. Uh, we, we had an, an area that used to be sugarcane. And we had about 10,000 people that lived on the other side of the, the fields. And eventually the sugarcane people moved out, they sold off the place and they put in 112,000 homes in that area. Well, what they did was they left the rest of us that lived there to foot the bill. And that's what I foresee possibly happening here in Hooper. When they did all this development, the developers came in, they did their thing and they left. They left us with lacking water. So they had to go in, tear up the streets, put in water pipes. The sewer system was not built for 112,000 families. So they ended up tearing up the road for that. And we footed the bill. The taxpayers footed the bill. I don't want to see that here. I have wonderful neighbors that are all retired and I do not want to see them taxed out of their homes. That is unfair. If developers want to come in and develop, fine, you go ahead and do what you got to do. But you guys should be paying for all of the upgrades, not us. If our sewer system can handle it, yeah, maybe it can. But at some point it's going to be, it's going to have to be maintained and it's going to have to be maintained a lot sooner than expected. We should not have to foot the bill for that. Our farmers, I understand, you folks deserve every single penny you can get for your, for your property. Get it. But not on the backs of us that we'll have to pay the taxes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mark.
My name is Natalie Zewick. I live at 5067 South, 5300 West. And I just, I agree with pretty much, um, everything everybody said, but I just wanted to chime in that, you know, I grew up, I was that little girl in Clinton, when I grew up in Clinton. And to see what's happened to the Pattersons' fields up there is just, it's horrifying to me. I stay out of Clinton, I stay out of Layton, I come home and Hooper is home. I want to stay away from that mess. I think that pretty much, I'm speaking for the majority here when I say that. Um, my husband is from Mountain Green, the Morgan County area. He grew up in a very small town. And if anybody's been up there recently, Mountain Green is about to become the next Park City. I don't want that down here with many homes, um, people living into our city. There comes, becomes crime, crime comes, you know, more people, more crime. When we moved here 16 years ago, my husband and I felt very safe. In about the past five to seven years, I don't feel safe. My son's, um, pickup truck was shot right through the windshield. There was three shots one night. Nobody knows who it was, like they're broken into. In the last 16 years, things here have changed enormously. Um, I feel like Hooper is, again, Hooper is home. I want it to stay that way. I don't want this mess down here. Um, you can go up 4,000 and look at those townhomes. There's not a person in this audience that wants Hooper to look like that mess up there. It's a disaster. It's disgraceful and to do that to Hooper would be a very disservice to our citizens. You all say that Hooper belongs to the people. And I just want to say, if you're going to talk the talk, walk the walk.
Thank you, Natalie.
Good evening. Figured I better get down here while I can still see you. Uh, my concern here today is.
Your name?
Uh, yeah. My name's Bruce Taylor. I live at, uh, 4745 West, 5100 South in Hooper. Been a resident of Hooper for 48 years. And, uh, today, uh, I'm here to just refresh, uh, a little bit of what we talked about last February for COVID and all that stuff went on. And, uh, just wanted to talk about the water and the water tank that's been proposed for Hooper. And, uh, in our February meeting, uh, that was proposed by, uh, Culinary Water, Hooper Culinary Water. And that was, ended up being, that conditional use permit was, ended up being denied at that time in February. So I just wanted to bring it up where the general plan's open and just, uh, refresh your memory, our, our memory of, uh, what's going forward for the next 20 years. As we know, we're going to need water somewhere, somehow. But my, my thoughts are is that we put it in the right, right place because we have plenty of time. The proposal is five to 20 years from now. Uh, but with what's happened, I'm concerned and, uh, we had this discussion somewhat in February. Um, I need my glasses because it is too dark. My, my discussion was targeted against the Hooper Water District to obtain a conditional use permit for culinary water facility, which would include a 20-foot, 25-foot tall and 107-foot water tank, cement water tank and a deep well. Also, the water treatment plant that's being proposed includes a 60 by 60-foot building. Back in February, uh, this committee denied this request for that conditional use permit. Some of the reasons were Hooper Water District, uh, bought an existing home with three acres solely to sell the home and use the two acres in the back for this water permit. They fully intended to sell the home with one acre and require a 30-foot easement to get back to the back two acres they want for the water facility, one way in, one way out. Because this is at the top of 5100 South and 4700 West, this water tank would basically be in the backyard of 10 existing homes, which have all been there for 40 years or more. Normally when a water tank is put in like this, like the one in Roy, the tank is put in, in a large open area and then homes are built around it. And those people choose to buy those homes and live by it.
Got about 20 seconds.
The Hooper, uh, the Hooper Water District, what they've done is they refusing to sell this property and find a new location. They've rented this home out for one year and their goal is to definitely stay there and get this committee to approve this conditional use permit. And that's my concern. They need over the next, they have five to 20 years to find a new and location. There's plenty of acres and acres of land. And, uh, my opposition and of course the committee denied this in February is that they don't, they, they are refusing to sell this home and look forward. And I appreciate your concern. I know we talked about this in February and just wanted to bring it to our attention again where we're opening up the general plan.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any questions or anything for me?
Keep your eye out for a spot.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Blake Maragoni. I live at 5990 West, 5350 South. I feel pretty fortunate that I was able to move here to a new subdivision like, uh, Miss Prince here. Grew up in Hooper, moved to Clinton, lived there for 10 years. As soon as it started getting extremely busy and traffic was completely terrible, we knew we had to move back out west. So, uh, I feel very fortunate that because of those circumstances I, I could become a, or continue being a Hooper resident. I'll give this pretty brief. I just, uh, as we're opening this plan, we're going through this, I know it's not simple. It's going to take time, it's going to take years, maybe a year, year, year and a half. Um, and while we do that, if, if we could possibly think about slowing down some of the development. So we're still getting all those requests and, and one fear I think is we've, we're making this very public. this very public, is that we're gonna have those developers trying to do some land grabs. I know it's not simple for the, for the folks that do have the land that they need to do something with. So I understand that and I understand property rights. Uh, but if we could slow it down while we get the picture figured out, I, I think that would benefit all of, uh, the residents here and, and everybody who wants to see this be done correctly so that we're not just opening it up again in a couple of years when we've completely screwed everything out. So that's, uh, that's my thoughts on it. I, I appreciate you guys' time. Um, love Hooper. I love everything about it. So I, I would like to keep it that way, although that's not the simple answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Blake.
I would like to just address, um, what Blake said. Uh, in the current general plan, there is a provision, says an important component of the general plan is an analysis of existing land use. This type of analysis takes a look at the city at a static point in time, allowing for the examination of past and present development trends and giving light to the positive and negative factors which have shaped the city into its present form. So by, by using the word static here, that is something that we have on the agenda tonight that we're going to discuss as far as, uh, just some of the concerns that Blake just mentioned. And I'll wait until we move to that, but I just wanted to...
Exactly what you said, putting things on pause.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Reece Chambers, 5308 South, 5900 West. Here, and good seeing you again. Just a couple of things for me. First of all, I'd like to just take a minute, just to, or a moment, just to thank, to bring, to pack, bring everybody to remember that Jolene Park, one of our great, you know, planning commissioners, you know, recently passed away. And she really did a, a lump for Hooper. Uh, when, uh, Jolene and I were on the planning commission back in the early 2000s, we went through the planning commission, I mean, the planning, general planning scan together. And, uh, just the one thing that I remember from that was, you know, people are coming up here and saying, hey, we gotta keep it, you know, rural, we can't do this. And one of the oldest farmers came up here and said, you know, I've got, uh, $6 million worth of land out there. He says, I'm 78 years old, I can't farm it anymore. He says, how about any of you newcomers want to buy it for $6 million and then rent it out for $45,000 a year and I'll do it? We can keep it rural. But, uh, I know that's not the case. And I just have a couple of things I'd like to just bring to your guys' attention. First of all, you guys as a planning commission have a obligation to keep and, or obligation to us, to the current residents here, to make sure that none of the new subdivisions that go in, and there will be new subdivisions that go in, do not negatively affect those people that are currently here, these people behind me here. Um, a couple of examples of that is the Eli subdivision out there, you know, by my house, where it's a state road and they came up there, the state made them put a, a turning lane to go into that subdivision. And as they parks it up there, there's five families now who cannot park on their front, on their scroll there because there's not enough room there for them to park there with the light there. So there's several things of that. So I would encourage you, whenever there is a new subdivision up there, make sure that it does not negatively affect the water as we said about this before. Uh, also, recommendation, keep acre lots wherever possible. Uh, many years ago, they came up there and they said, oh, you know, anytime you've got acre lots, you have, you know, round down, run down places, they're, they're not very good. But please, there's so many good looking acre lots around here that are built for us and that would be to keep like the rural community. And, uh, also, I'd like to see more mother-in-law's apartments filled into these subdivisions right here so that could take care of the, I mean, the, uh, and what is it, the minimum?
Moderning.
Yeah.
About 20 seconds.
We got that. There are so many people that get married out here that would love to stay out here if they could go into one of these, you know, four or $600 places like that. Lastly, Jolene and I came up with three things that we said as a subdivision, I mean, as a planning commission. First of all, be fair. Second, be, be consistent. And third, please don't feel sorry for the subscribers, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Amanda's freezing up here, so...
It's okay, you're good. We care about you.
You don't have my comment.
You're okay.
Uh, my name's Scott and I, I live at 6181 West, 4700 South in Hooper. Isn't Hooper a great place? Yes. I love the people. You know, that's why I moved out here, is to be out here in the rural community. I love the sound of a farm tractor. I love the smell of horses. I love the smell of cows. I love all that. And I moved out here because the lots were all one acre lots when I moved out here. And I was told back then that they were gonna all stay one acre lots. Well, they did. I would like, so my bullet point, I don't know your name there, young man, but, um, I would like Hooper to stay with one acre lots. The reason why is because, you know, there's, there's a quality of person that wants a one acre lot. It just, there just is. I mean, it, it, it's just the way it is. Yeah, some people don't have to take care of a one acre lot. But I'd say the majority of the people that have a one acre lot out here in Hooper, they know how to take care of it. Also, I grew up in Clinton. I remember Pattersons and all that corner and everything. We had a great time. And I'll tell you what, I do not want Hooper to turn into a Clinton or a West Haven over on 40, around 4,000. I mean, that is ridiculous over there. And when I was a teenager, I always looked forward to coming out to Hooper. Tomato days, uh, the rodeo, uh, the demolition derby. You know what? Hooper can be a shining light. It was for me when I was a kid. And I enjoyed raising my family out here. And it's just a great place to live. And I, I hope that we can be that, that city that everybody wants to come to and not just fall into the norm. Well, this city's doing it, we have to do it. We don't have to do it. We don't have to follow. Don't be a follower. So that's all I have to say probably, uh, for time, but thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Uh, my name's Steve Whipple.
Yep.
I live at 4543 South, 5500 West. We moved here 21 years ago, the open spaces. We're , uh, everybody's talking about half acre and acre lots. Right behind me, there's a 41 house, first phase development with, I think there are eight acre homes, patio homes. There's 10 feet between the homes. There's 14-foot backyards. Uh, I came here five years ago. We talked about this with the planning commission. Uh, it was already determined, I think, before I came to complain about it, that they were gonna approve the development. Uh, I'd hate to see this go over and over again. People were talking about the apartments up here on 4,000. Is it gonna come here? I would hope not. Is there any more of these eight acre home sites that need to be developed? I don't know. The first phase has 41, second one, probably 141 homes. Uh, it's a shame.
Thank you.
My name is Jayce Schneider. Um, I live at 4604 South 5500 West. Um, I was born and raised in Hooper. Um, and lived here for most of my life. When my wife and I got married, we lived in Harrisville. And in 2014, we sold that house with, uh, the hopes of coming out and building next to my parents, um, on their land. Um, and, uh, anyways, we, we stayed out here. We haven't, uh, been able to do that, um, with some of the zoning requirements, um, being short where, where they're at. Um, but obviously, we love Hooper. I've, this is home to me. Um, it's where we want to raise our family. And, um, right now, we, we rent. Um, and that's partially because we want to be able to develop, uh, the land the way that we'd like to. Um, and so I guess my, my point in rambling on here is just to have some consideration for residents that live here already and that are looking to develop their land. Um, agree with everyone else. The microphone doesn't like me. Um, to keep Hooper the same way, obviously, we, we want Hooper to be country and to, to be consistent that way. But I also think that we need to be very mindful of saying yes to the right people instead of the wrong people. And I think in the past, that's happened where, and I think that's what's happened with other cities. They, they say yes to these big developments and, and development happens. And it's gonna happen. But I think part of keeping Hooper the way it is, is saying yes to those residents that live here and, and need to do something with their property. And, and granted, there's not a, a solve-all, uh, uh, with that. There's gonna be things that come up and, and differences that way. But I would like to see those people that live here get taken care of. Um, my parents are elderly and so the idea was to come and live next to them and help take care of them. And, uh, and so even the, you know, the idea of mother-in-law's apartments and, or, or houses and things like that.
About 20 seconds.
Just to be creative and to allow for growth where it fits and makes sense, to use logic and not, uh, maybe shut down everything based on the letter of the law, but to take time and look at cases individually and understand and think outside of the box when we're coming up with this plan. So, thanks, Jayce.
Thank you.
I'll be quick. I know everybody's cold. My name is Suzy Roundy. I live at 5642 West, 5725 South. I moved here about five years ago, so we're transplants to Hooper. But I grew up in Star Valley, so I no one understands small towns. And this is what we were looking for when we moved to Hooper. We wanted something that was gonna be small, um, and have that good family hometown feel. Um, right in our backyard, filled behind us, um, is all the new patio homes that came in. I can say if we would have probably known that that was happening, I don't know that we would have built on our streak. Uh, we do have like half acre lots there. Um, and we are very grateful for that because it's what we could afford at the time. So we're grateful for the opportunity to be able to come to Hooper in a place that we could afford. Um, however, in our subdivision that's small, instead of horses, you know, and cows moving, we get ATVs going up and down our subdivision all day. And that wasn't quite the sounds we had in mind when we came to Hooper. Um, being close to 55 and 55, right by Sinclair there, we have issues, I think, with practical. I wish I would have thought to research before I came. I hadn't planned on making a statement. But there are lots of accidents there. Um, if life comes, you know, in the middle of the night and a lot of people who don't live there don't hear, they don't know about it, they don't hear about all the accidents. Um, I worry a lot about the safety. The children on our street that are supposed to walk over to Hooper Elementary for school, um, crossing that road is awfully scary for them. Um, none of the sidewalks are maintained. And I feel, um, you know, I've seen on the Hooper page, a lot of people fight and say, you moved to Hooper, you knew what it was like. And some people, residents, don't feel safe. I'm in the middle of that. You know, I moved to Hooper wanting a small town, but I feel like, uh, residents deserve the opportunity to be safe when they move here, no matter what lot size they have. And, um, with slow growth, I feel like we're gonna be able to take better care of the residents that are already here, that already have questions and concerns, before we open that up and get our, you know, roadways busier, get our sidewalks busier. Um, so those are just my bullet points. I'm worried about the safety, um, and just the slow growth, keep in a small town feel. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Janice Robinson. I live at 3223 South, 5100 West. I'm just right on the, you know, edge of Hooper, West Haven, non-corporated area. Um, I'm a little bit different than a lot of the people in Hooper. I've lived here less than a year, but I absolutely love it here. So while I appreciate the new growth, because that's where I live, a half acre lot, it doesn't mean that the people who are coming here with new growth love Hooper any less. We live, we moved out here, or so interested in coming out here because I love the sense of community. I love the sense that the neighbors care about you. Um, you know, I love the open spaces. I've got a field with cattle out in front of my house. Absolutely love it. So, yeah, some growth needs to happen. Just that's kind of the way that it goes. You know, people talk about their kids, you know, move away to go to school, try to move back to raise the families, can't afford land here, can't afford to take care of an acre land. So I do think there should be some interspersed, smaller and larger properties. Um, but I do think it needs to be done very carefully without losing the sense of what Hooper is and the reason why we all, you know, started out here or have since moved here. I don't want to lose that sense of what Hooper is and what it used to be. And so I think new growth needs to happen very carefully and very well planned, uh, so we don't lose the sense of, you know, kind of what it is here, the reason everybody loves it. And I guess that's just, you know, kind of what I want to say. It's a very, very difficult, difficult point. And there's, you know, a lot of reason for growth, a lot of reason for keeping it being small. And I think you just kind of need to do what's best for the people who are already here, while also keeping in consideration the people who would like to move here, can't always afford the very large lots, can't always afford to buy up entire farms to keep it from developing. And just keep, keep Hooper the sense that, you know, the way that it is, the reason why everybody loves it here.
Thanks, Jayce.
Anybody else? It's like we wore everybody out. We appreciate everybody's comments and they will all be well-considered, I promise. And, uh, so at this point in time, on item four, um, this is gonna be a motion that's amongst the, the planning commission. And I'll go ahead and, Amanda has the verbiage for it, so we'll let her go ahead and make the motion.
We have more discussion before.
Oh, yeah. Any more discussion? Thank you.
Well, I...
You do?
Jacob?
I just wanted to make just a couple of comments and express my appreciation to all of you for enduring the cold and being here with us tonight. The, uh, involvement of the team is absolutely the most vital ingredient in moving forward. We're right at the beginning of the starting line of this process. And actually, I, in the time that I've been on the planning commission, we've actually talked about and anticipated this moment for several years. When we opened up the general plan again, the most common thing that, that I've experienced on the planning commission is three zones, taking acre lots to half acre lots. It's something that we see very frequently. I think a lot of people have felt frustrated by that, frustrated by larger lots getting smaller. And, um, and we, uh, our decisions are often guided by the code that is written and also by the, the future land use map. And so right at this moment, we have the opportunity to define that map and, and decide what the city's gonna look like in the future. During this process, I think we intend to look at, um, I wrote down just this little list, parks and, and open areas, zoning laws, uh, commercial, um, zoning, transportation, trails, streets and sewers, impact fees and schools. Just have a look at all of these different elements. And, um, since this is gonna be a long process, your involvement will be appreciated continually. Just recognizing that once something is built, it really, it's really hard to unbuild it. And, uh, so I look forward to working with all of you, with the commissioners and with all of you as residents and, and helping to build something in, uh, in Hooper that we'll all be proud of in the future.
Thank you, Jacob.
I just mentioned one thing. I was just thinking, uh, as we were talking, I, I remember , uh, many, many instances when we've been considering improvements. There'd be a lot of members of the public who'd come in and expressed frustration about not knowing about meetings when the general plan was open and, and missing those opportunities to make their voice known. So I, I think this is a great opportunity, all those that came to maybe spread the word as the meetings come up, uh, as we go down this road, to let everybody know, it's always hard to hear about it after the fact. It's always frustrating to be able to know about something. So, uh, that's my consent.
Thank you. Very great advice. And we are trying our very, very best to get this in front of everybody. That being said, I guess I should have closed for public comments, but public comments are now closed and, uh, commissioners have delivered it, so.
Yeah, I, one, one thing that I...
Yeah, I, one thing that I, that came to mind, and I don't know if Ada Parker's still here, if she's left. I can't see out there. She made the comment that she had put an offering on forty-seven acres north of here because she couldn't afford to farm here. And I would be interested to see why that is. What can we do? Is there something we can do to help make it more affordable here? I, I'm not sure how farming works. I've never done it, but I'm just curious. If there's anything that we can do, any provisions we can put in place or anything that makes it so those farms are... I don't know, so that we can retain more of those. I don't know. That was just something that went through my mind. I was wondering why it's more affordable up north, what the difference is, but...
Well, something that I think that ultimately is gonna be part of our conversation is that, uh, I think we're all aware of this phenomenon that Hooper's been family farms for generations now. And a lot of us are tied into those families that were part of the original farms. But now, as somebody made the comment, that this may be the last generation of farmers. And so everyone that's part of these families are trying to decide what to do with that property. And it goes from families being sold and then developers are developing. And there's definitely an incentive for them to get as much out of it as possible, as far as profit is concerned. And so, and we've definitely seen that incentive driving a lot of the decisions that have been made. But we also see that we have a large incentive just from our heart and just from what Hooper is and what we love about Hooper, to preserve it. And so in order to do that, we need to codify that. We need to put it into our plan and then apply it. And of course, you know, for me as a commissioner, this is part of my education is what it means to be a planning commission and how to do that the best and how to serve the community the best. But also to make sure that what is in the plan is crystal clear and can be applicable and something that we can enforce to preserve and to do the things that we all want to do to make sure that they're, to the extent possible, preserve the country feeling.
Find that balance.
Yeah, find the balance.
Thank you. Go ahead, Amanda.
Okay, you're gonna entertain a motion. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it. I would like to motion that the Planning Commission complete a comprehensive study to amend the general plan.
Authority, short-sweet.
Great. Commissioner Prince is in motion that make a comprehensive amendment of the general plan at this time. Anyone?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Jacob seconded. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, the motion passes, and the general plan will, comprehensive amendment of the general plan will begin. Uh, the last item of business, which will, I know there were some comments brought up on this, is a consideration of a temporary land use radiation. And Amanda, in the general plan right now, currently, it does talk about, so this is something that's been thought of before to, probably Reed was involved in this, that we take a look at the general plan at a static moment in time. And so we are, we want to make a recommendation to the city council on this, on this motion, that we, uh, put a stay on all rezonings from this point forward until the general plan is taken place. Any comments from the commission before I open up for public comment?
Well, the only comment I make is that I recognize that this, this is the one aspect of this which could be frustrating for people who are ready to or wanting to develop or rezone or do some, something like that at this moment. Um, and I think that, that we wanna be sympathetic to that. But at the same time, in the conversations that we've had, we need to, we need to create a situation where we have the freedom to really think about this without the pressure of a lot of things coming in. And I think, and I guess, you know, not wanting to push too hard against what we're proposing here, but just recognize that there are different forces. There's a force that wants, that people want to develop, but there's also this force that we want to take the time to make sure that we do this right. And, um, so making this recommendation to the city council provides us the freedom to do this right, to slow things down so there's not a mad rush for people to go and go, "Oh, well, things could change, so let's develop this right now." Put a stop on it, say we're gonna put a pause to development so that we can make the wisest decisions possible. And so with that in mind, even though I have raised those concerns, I just wanna say that I'm endorsing this move and endorse the recommendation that we're making to the city council to, to pause any of these changes to land use at this time.
Basically just taking a timeout. Uh, the properties that have already been through the process of rezone will continue to move forward. But no rezoning would take place. That's our recommendation. Uh, I'd like to open it up for public comment. I know the hour's getting late, but we do, this is a public meeting, so we'd like to open up for public comment. If anyone would like to come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Chris Molson, fifty-eight twenty West, thirty-eight yards south. Um, as I said and listed, I've been pleased to hear the comments of the citizens here. Um, I think it's got some good input. Uh, a couple of things that I wanna voice my concern with as a citizen. Um, when I hear this, it frustrates me extremely, I mean, I'm extremely frustrated right now. Uh, earlier in the meeting, we tabled a development that was proposed to us or a change. We tabled one last meeting, and then we said, "Well, revisit it in November." But then we said that this plan's gonna be open for a year or a year and a half. Why would we table something to November if it's gonna be a year from November? That wouldn't make any sense. Why would we stop growth when we already have ordinances in place? We already have procedures in place to make sure that it adheres to the plan that was in place that was done very well and due diligently by the staff and the commission before. What changed? Growth changed, but the plan didn't change. And as long as our facilities will accommodate, then why would we stop something that was in the process of building a house? If any of you were up here and wanted to buy a house, and you talked to your, this landlord, and you were gonna develop it, and you're gonna break ground this fall, and because of some whimsical rabbit out of our hat, we decided to open the plan, and now you're stifled for a year, year and a half, based on what we're saying, before you can ever break ground for your house in Hooper? It's ridiculous. And I'll tell you, as a city councilman, it won't fly with me next week. So, um, put that in your thoughts as you continue to talk about this, but highly opposed to that.
I'd like to, I'd like to respond to that if I can. Um, as far as the whimsical rabbit out of our hat, um, if you've listened to some of the comments that have been made here, and since we've talked about reopening this general plan and revisiting it, I've, I've talked to quite a few people that live out here, and this is something that they have concerns about. And I recognize that that plan, the general plan was put in place. There's a reason that a request is turned in to the Planning Commission. It's not an automatic yes because the general plan says, yes, it's possible that this rezone can happen from an R1 to an R2. That doesn't mean it's a given. That's why there's a planning commission, because we need to look at all of the facets that go into making those decisions. And there have been several members who live in our community who have brought up valid concerns, and a lot of them have been brought up tonight as far as the transportation, our natural resources, the safety of our children, and the increase in traffic that's going to come at this time. And since we are looking at the general plan and those things have already been put into motion, it doesn't make sense to continue to grant these rezones when we are in the middle of trying to come up with a plan. That doesn't make any sense. There's a reason why it says that...
You have a plan.
We have a plan, but, but you, you don't come in and you say, "Okay, we're just gonna automatically approve." Otherwise, there wouldn't be a planning commission.
I appreciate your education on how the system works. I'm new to this, apparently.
Your sarcasm isn't helping. So I'm trying to be respectful of you, and I can tell that you're heated, but we represent the people that live in this city. We don't represent developers.
I was elected by them. You were appointed. Remember that.
That's okay. Hey, I'm invested.
Hey, Chris, um, just sometimes, you know, I appreciate your concern and your passion. You know, it's well-taken. However, we're kind of, we're kind of where the rubber meets the road. I don't know if you know this, but there are some areas in Hooper where the sewer is not working properly. We need to address the reason why we tabled those is because we need to address the impact of traffic, of sewer, of water. And there were some real concerns on those properties. And it's like, you know, you've all played sports before. We're taking a timeout. It's not that they can't develop. It's not that we're not gonna let them, but we're gonna do it the right way. Not just take a rubber stamp and stamp everybody, but we're gonna do it the right way. So I appreciate your passion, Chris, but, um, I think we might have a little more information on actually the problems that are in the development process. The developers are not on our side. They're about money.
And the general plan that you referenced, that we already have, I read right from that, that we're allowed to look at that, look at this and review it in a static state, which is what we're trying to do. That's taken directly from the general plan that you said that we have in place.
One other, this comment on that, um, I was, you know, I really...
You're remembering people, but you're being disrespectful for them. You were supposed to... Why would you do that? There's no purpose to that, Chris. Where was I at the city council? You're just disgracing.
When, when we had the meeting last month, um, I was, I was basically the one who voted against this because of, you know, property rights. I completely understand that. I completely understand that people want to develop property. Um, and between then and now, it's come to realization that this isn't just by the seat of the pants that we've done this. Um, and to remain constant, that's why me personally, I came on board more with this and agree with it because there's actually a temporary land use ordinance at the state level. That ordinance is ten-nine-eight-five-zero-nine. And that, through the state laws and ordinances that are on the books, that allows a planning commission to do exactly what we're doing, putting it on hold in a static state. So it's not just the planning commission because we're just the seat of our pants. We're doing this because we started down this road to make it fair for everybody, whether it's four acre, uh, four lots or a hundred and fifty lots. We are going to pause that, recommend that we pause that, until we come together as a community and decide what direction to move forward, to be fair to all. And so there is a law in the books that allows us to do that, to recommend that. There's law in the books that allows you as a city council to recommend that as well and to pass that. And I'm all for that. Now, why do we recommend to do that till November? Because we have a meeting with the Wasatch Front Regional Council meeting, September twenty-first of this month. We're gonna get more direction from them on what to do with the existing zoning, whether something else can be done in the meantime or not, and we'll see where that leads. Yes, it may be pushed down another year, year and a half. We don't know. Or it may come up sooner. Maybe there's some recommendations that other cities and towns have done. Until that point, we're not gonna put a hold on it until, or recommend put a hold on it till we get more information available to us.
You're back. State your name.
Okay, Beverly Carter Ellsworth. And you've already heard from me tonight. We were one of those families that submitted a request for rezone. We did it, following all the rules under the existing general plan. At the meeting a month ago, we were told that it would be tabled until November. Um, that wasn't what we wanted to hear, but we were willing to even negotiate and cut our request less than half. I find it very frustrating, very upsetting, that now I'm hearing that could possibly be pushed off for a year. I've already gone through this with eight lots, and I know it takes a lot of time to get all of the entities together to be able to get the improvements and everything. I really feel it's highly unfair to, to be trying to do your best, to follow all the rules, to do everything right the way the city would like you to. We're law-abiding citizens. We're not, and we're not in this to make a boatload of money. We're not big-time developers. We're just a farm family. And so I guess I really feel like when we submitted it in good faith, under the existing plan, and then to come to the meeting and to be told that, oh, we've gotta be put off for a whole year or a year and a half to wait, it just feels like that is really unfair. It feels like you kind of changed the rules in the middle of the game. And I really don't feel like that's a fair thing to do to people that are already started down the process. Now, maybe for those in the future that haven't submitted, you can say, "Okay, on hold. You gotta wait." But I feel like those of us that have already gone through the process and you, you know, you pay your fees, you get everybody on board, you have to send the letters out, you do the whole thing, and we've done it twice now. Uh, so we feel like we've already done our best to follow the policy as the general plan exists, that it would not be fair to tell us, "Sorry, we're changing the rules now. It's a whole year away." And that's what I'm here to say.
Thank you. Thanks, Beverly. Any more comments?
I'm Wayne Woodison, fifty-five thirty-three South, seventy-one hundred West. Uh, a number of years ago, probably about ten or so, or more, fifteen, I sat in some chairs that you're in now. Uh, I too sat and voted to open the general plan and got to be on the Planning Commission throughout that entire process. Uh, there, of course, we learned many lessons, and I'm sure you're gonna learn some of your own. Uh, I come particularly to caution you and to encourage you. Uh, I caution you to, uh, and encourage you. I caution you about breaking the laws of the state of Utah and possibly violating even the ordinances that Hooper's already put into place. And I appreciate the due diligence of you as commissioners for studying those ordinances. And I encourage you to turn to your left and, and use Brandon's experience uh, in the legal fields to advise you on what's, what's right and proper. And I encourage him to speak his mind as he sees, sees you starting down the path that may not be very wise. Uh, one of the cautions is, is one of them that Beverly just pointed out, that she's already started this process. And as she did that, the ordinance was in place for her to come and appeal and request, uh, within her rights as a property owner, to, to request to use her property as she sold beds or seized bid. And then if you were to deny her that right, then that, she could actually argue that that's possibly a taking, what's known as a taking. Brandon can explain that to you, can you not? Uh, so he can advise about that. So there's, uh, property owners also have responsibilities and rights. And I, I just caution you to be very careful about what I call suspending the rules or even giving the appearance of suspending the rules while you huddle together and make decisions that may take, as you pointed out, might take a year, it may take two and a half years. And there'll be, in the meantime, you still have ordinances, and the property owners have the right to see those ordinances exercised and enforced. That's all that I have.
Thanks, Frank.
I will comment on last month before we did vote. Um, Brandon was at the meeting, and the recommendation did come up because of the things that Brandon recommended. So I don't put you on the spot on getting a comment.
I think, and I'm not gonna give him the legal opinions in an open meeting, but I think you're, within your right if you wanna make a recommendation to the city council, any way you wanna make it. If that's, you can make a recommendation, vote on it, and then it's up to them to decide. But I would, uh, suggest that you give your reasoning for it, so it's more than just a simple, hey, we wanna put a hold on everything. Put in your motion why, what you're thinking, what the purpose of it is. And then ultimately, they are the ones that have to make the ultimate decision on that.
Hi, I'm Andrew Warwood. I live at fifty-two oh-one West, forty-one seventy-five South. And I'd first like to say, Chris, I do appreciate your passion because you represent a certain demographic of Hooper, and they have property rights. I actually am pretty close to, or was really close to, the Evans family, and so I feel their frustration. I, I would recommend maybe to the commission that you look at these. I know there's obviously some things we don't know, but I don't know about, with approving those, uh, those plans that have already been tabled from last month and this, just tonight. Maybe taking those and setting those aside since they have been presented and saying if they do follow, uh, certain guidelines, meaning they, they can, our system can sustain those properties being changed that you afford with them, or take a closer look and set... set those aside separate from next week's or next month's planning commission meeting and, and anything that would be presented then. And maybe set it, set those aside, especially kind of, kind of what the city attorney just said, when you say that you're putting a moratorium on, say that you're gonna say if, if those structures will handle it. And I don't know, obviously, I'm not a commissioner, I don't get to bear that weight and I don't get to draw the line in the sand. But I think that one of the reasons I moved to Hooper, moved back to Hooper was because of looking out for your neighbor. And these guys are our neighbors too. They just happened to get caught in the crosswind of all this.
Thanks, Andrew. Anybody else wanna make a comment? Okay, we'll go, go ahead and close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any?
Um, to Beverly, Beverly, I don't want you to think that I'm being completely heartless. I know you probably may feel that way, and I do appreciate where you're coming from. And I think that if I wear your shoes, I would feel just as much frustration. And we're in a hard position. I feel that we kinda have to, I know you're already in the process. We are already in the process too. We've already started trying to gather feedback and trying to move forward with things. And I guess the concern for me would be if we say, "Okay, we're gonna allow this one to go through because it was already in the process," there's a whole lot more that's already technically in the process. At what point in the process do we recognize this project that somebody's trying to put together and say, "Well, they're already in the process. They've, they've met with people and they've discussed that they're gonna be doing this." I just feel like we need to be consistent and there, I worry that if we say, "Okay, we're gonna allow it for these," then we're gonna have a bunch of other people that are gonna say, "Well, but we're already in the process too because we've met and we've done this much on it." And I just, I wanna make sure that we're being fair and that we're following the, the instruction that I feel like we've been given as well. And ultimately, I mean, it's not easy to sit up here, it's not something that's fun to make these decisions. I think a lot of us do it because we care about our city and we care about the people that actually live in our city and are gonna be affected by these things. And, you know, Chris, I apologize, I know you're frustrated and I, I can tell that you're passionate. You're right, I was appointed and you were elected, but I think as an elected official, or whether we're appointed, it doesn't matter, we're here to represent or to serve the people in this community. And I think as a whole, we have to be united in purpose, and our purpose should be to put the people that live here first. And that's, that's what's important to me. And that's all I've gotta say.
Thank you. Any other comments?
For me, I, I sympathize with Beverly a great deal as well and, and I, I actually feel like if there's a way that we could accommodate things that are already in the process, I'd like to investigate that. I know that, that, so last month when we met and, and this issue came up, my feeling was that consistency was an important part of what we do, making sure that we treat citizens fairly. And up to this point, you know, this book and our, our general land use map has been So we are at this point in time rewriting that, but I do feel like, like our, our people need to be apprised of exactly what this process is going to be like. And, you know, so, so we're kind of putting this stake in the ground now, this is what we're doing, this is where our plan is. But, but, yeah, derailing things that have already been in the process for a long time feels, feels a little harsh to me.
Jacob, isn't that, isn't that why we table till November?
November?
So we can research that with the meetings that we have upcoming and see if there's something that possibly could be done?
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah.
Well, and I think too, you know, some of us are a little bit newer to this, but just because it's been the process that anything basically that's come before the planning commission for a rezone, if it says that it's allowable in the general plan, then it's pretty much been rubber stamped and set through. Because, well, it's, it's okay because it says that we can rezone it from R1 to R2. And my feeling is, even though we can, we need to maybe think a little bit more about the impact that those things have on our community. And when you're talking about a large subdivision, 52 acres, that's gonna have a, a huge impact. It's not just small. But at the time that we tabled it, that wasn't the case. And so, we had to go off of what we had to work with and just like Commissioner Platt said, we have, we tabled it until November so that there could be a little bit more discussion. But I, my feeling is, yes, it's allowable for us to do these rezones, but that doesn't mean it's a given. That's why, that's why it's a request. And that's, I feel like we have a responsibility to listen to the concerns that are being brought up at these rezone meetings when residents come and they say, "I'm concerned about my children, I'm concerned about the increase in traffic, I'm concerned about the increase in class sizes in our schools." I feel like we have an obligation to listen to those, to those things and as planners, we have to look down the road and see the impact that that's going to have on the residents that actually live out here. Not just landowners, but people that actually live out here and are going to, to be affected by those decisions. And, you know, I agree, I think if something's already been in the, in the process, it's a frustrating thing, but again, at what point in the process do we say it? There's a lot of things that are in the works right now.
And, and see, Commissioner, Commissioner Price and Commissioner Will Cox. How long, twenty, I should want, by year?
Nine months.
Nine months. The reason I took issue with it last week and, and it's a good thing, is the training that we had under the cities and Jacob, you remember this, cities and towns and leagues, remember the training that we had on that? Actually, according to the state and the way that I, I understood the training was, if it's actually in our zoning map and land use map and if the landlord wants to come and do it, unless there's some other pre-existing item that the citizens or the landowners around that bring it up, it's actually our duty to uphold that land and zoning use map. That's the guide to the city. That's why when we open it up, it's so important that, that people still let input because that is basically the guideline. So when we say, you know, it, it's really up to us whether to get zoned or not, according to the cities and leagues and training that Jacob and I had and Mary's had and, and those before, it's actually our duty to uphold that, that people actually come to get that done. It's not just whether I feel like I want to or not, it's our duty to uphold that. So that's one of the reasons I did vote last meeting against that. And I do, I think it's, I think it's worth, I mean, we can, we can put it through to the city council tonight and they can vote on it. But anyway, they vote about it, yes, we need to look at that to see if maybe, you know, man, I don't know, I don't know how many more is in the works, how many more is in the works since we've had that meeting? As far as people's come in, paid their dues, what are we looking at?
I think we have about two, two, three of them.
Two rezone requests, so something we can look at. I don't know if we put that verbiage in tonight, but the city council had it, but yes, needs to be looked at. That's what November meeting's about, that's why we tabled it.
Yes, so both those properties will be on November's agenda, so.
Again, the way I can, this, like, 20, it's already been paid for, an application submitted, they have a right to have that looked at under the laws that are on the books at that time. So whether or not the planet, or sorry, whether or not you recommend something to the city council as far as pause, moratorium, and whether or not they go along with that or not, that would apply only to something that happens after they do that. So anything that happened before that, that was why the recommendation was to relook at those in November. You're gonna have to look at those as they stood when they were filed, if that makes sense, anything that was paid for and submitted. So on the one hand, you have to look at whether or not it qualifies for the rezone, but there is, as was mentioned, also an ability for you to look at any countervailing causes not to approve it. So it isn't that you just approve everything that comes through, they have to qualify to request that, and then you look to see if there's a countervailing cause that would make it to where you wouldn't approve it. So my view is that the ones that have come in, paid their applications, submitted it, you, you do have to make a decision on that, and I don't see you kicking those off for a year, year and a half. I think, I think that was why we decided, okay, November, if you wanna get some more input, I've had a few more meetings, but then at that point, I think you need to make the decision on those. Whether or not the council says, you know, whatever they say related to your recommendation on the moratorium, I don't think it affects those that are already in the city. Anything that comes after that would be then subject to notice if it's, it's out there already, the decision moratorium. So if that makes sense, that, that kinda, I just wanna clarify why, as far as my recommendation was to relook at those that had already come in and not just push them off forever, because I think they do have the right to have a decision made, since they came and put their application in before, and whether or not the city council does a moratorium or not, I don't know, but those regardless were in before that, if that makes sense.
So, so I have a question with Commissioner Paulson. Do you have a problem from this day forward doing that? For those not already in the books, to stop it so we can have a static plan so we can actually look at it?
I mean, I think we can discuss it next week in the city council meeting.
So I think, I think make your recommendation, then they can maybe look at what happens in the ones that are in November versus the ones that come in after.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I, I appreciate that, counsel. I like the idea of giving the, those who've been through the process a fair hearing and then also recognize that our, our incentive and our desire to create a space where that we can operate in as we go through this process.
You know, just make a comment that this is what it's all about, make sure we do it right. And if we have to take a step back and look at it, like Eric said, at 10,000 feet, that's what we need to do, and maybe that's the situation here. But at this point, we'd like to entertain a motion for a recommendation to the city council on temporary land use regulation.
Okay, I'll make, um, a motion for a recommendation to the city council to put in place a temporary land use regulation, putting a halt to all rezones until the comprehensive study of the general plan is complete and an amended general plan is adapted and put in place with the understanding that the developments that we have discussed at our last planning commission meeting and this one, will, those will be discussed and hopefully we can come up to, come up with a resolution that will work and be legal for all of the parties involved and that will have that by the, I believe it's the November 12th planning commission meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Prince has motioned, I won't try to repeat what she said, but-
She's got it in writing there.
She did, good job. I'm looking for a second on the motion.
I'll second that.
Nate has seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, so the motion carries for the recommendation to go to city council. At this point, we are, are through. We appreciate again your patience and, and your input, and we look forward to a lot more input from all of you. We're gonna make sure that you all have opportunities to have your voice heard and to plan Hooper like it should be planned. Thank you and good night. Oh, most, oh, sorry, hang on. Motion to close the meeting?
I'll move that we can close the meeting. We adjourn the meeting.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Second, we are adjourned.